13th, 2021. Roll call, please, Candace.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami. Sandy. Bean. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We just have one item, action items, and second reading of ordinances here. We have 2.1 opioid litigation update. Dan, would you prefer us to go directly into executive session for this?
I would.
All right. So I'm going to request a motion to convene executive session. Got a motion from Mr. Bean, a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Do I need to list the purpose of that before we clear everybody out for the record?
You do.
All right. We're going to discuss pending litigation with attorney for consultation and advice and guidance for the pending opioid litigation, and we have the legal authority under the North Dakota Century Code, 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2 for attorney consultation on this pending litigation. At this time, I'd be asking everyone to leave the room so I can list who is in here for executive session. This should be relatively brief, but you're going to have to step out. If we could keep Mr. Doolitz here and Ms. Swanson, yep, and then anybody that's recording. All right. And for the record, for council members tonight, we have Danny Weigel, Katie Dockler, Brett Weber, Jeannie Mock, and Ken Bean.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the view of downtown Grand Forks. Grand Forks City Councils, community of the whole, from Monday, December 13th. Under item one, welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock. Cavami. Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. Item, under item two, discussion items 2.1. Approve the change of ownership of Italian Moon, DBA Italian Moon Pizza Holder, pizza, Italian Moon pizza, comma, holder of Class III on an off-sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage license. Good evening. Ms. Lemark.
President Sandy and members of the city council. We have a request for a change in ownership. Mr. Ken Towers and his family owned and operated Italian Moon 100% for many years in the community. And back in 2015, he made a purchase agreement with Mr. Scott Perthor to take over ownership of that license on a period, over a period of time. Due to the nature and the terms that are lined in that purchase agreement, the transfer was not able to be brought forward until the agreement had had its final payment made, and the sale was deemed final. So that time arrived now during, just shortly, a few months ago, during the COVID time, and so at this time, we're bringing forward for approval of city council to transfer that.
Any comments or questions?
Will move approval.
Approved by Weber, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, request from the Knights of Columbus Building Association,
DBA Columbian Club, for an extension of the time to complete the transfer license to a new owner. Ms. Lemark.
President Sandy, members of the city council. This is very similar to the item you saw last cycle of meetings for Muddy Rivers. Knights of Columbus ceased operations during the COVID pandemic, and in evaluating their operations, they decided they'd prefer to sell to another party. They have a party that they're working with. However, they will not be able to close the deal and get operational prior to the end of the year. So they're looking for a 90-day extension of completing that sale to keep their license active.
Is there any thoughts? Motion by Weber, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Item 2.3, approve transfer of Class I alcoholic beverage license from Charlie Brown Entertainment, Inc., DBA Charlie Browns Bar, to SS and KR Investments, doing business as Charlie Browns. Ms. Lemark.
Very, kind of another just pretty standard ownership transfer. Charlie Brown, Mr. Charles Brown has been interested in selling his license. He has found a buyer. SS and KR LLC are already a current license holder of another Class I establishment in town, so they're familiar with the terms, and they're just looking for council approval to complete this purchase and transfer.
Any comments? Mr. Weber has a question.
Where's the other license?
The office.
The office. Move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Bean. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Ms. Lemark. Item 2.4, application for abatement and settlement of taxes. Part A, 2019, true in full value of 600 First Avenue North, owned by Civic Auditorium Limited, DBA The Aurora at Greg Square, parcel 2811.004.00. Part B, 2019, true in full value of 215 First Avenue North, owned by MDI Limited Partnership, number 110, DBA The Kirk, parcel number 0001.226.01. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the city council. We received these two abatement applications for the 2019 tax year, owned by Civic Auditorium Limited, and the second by MDI Limited Partnership. We did receive income and expenses from both of these parties. Income shown so on. These statements represent only a portion of their property due to their income restricted rents. To value the complete property, we're using market rents. Properties do carry more expenses because of administration that's necessary to ensure compliance with these income restricted properties that they are. In our income approach, we've always used a little bit higher expense ratio, but what we found is that we needed to use a little bit more in this one. We did research properties of sales. They're extremely limited, but we did reach out to an appraisal firm that is familiar with these tax credit properties, and that provided with market data that our GIM, our gross income multiplier of 6.5, is reasonable with the age and condition of these two properties. Our cap rate of 8% is in line with the range of six and a half, or seven and a half to eight and a half as well. So we've considered all three approaches to value. A reduction for both of these properties is reasonable, fair, and equitable. These values are consistent with our 2020 values, in addition to the lowering. We've had the discussion of our values with the taxpayers' representative. They're in agreement with our values. So I would recommend that we lower the property owned by Civic Auditorium from $3,091,700 to $2,825,300. I also recommend that the property owned by MDI Limited Partnership be lowered from $2,761,200 to $2,479,200. If you have any questions, I think we'll have to get to that.
Any questions for Ms. Lazur?
Is one motion enough?
Yes, one motion should do it.
I'll move.
With approval of both items A and B. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lazur.
Item 2.5, approve appointment to the Special Assessment Commission. Any comments about Mr. Dupree? Anyone? Moved by Bean, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Item 2.6, chief, special operations group, the joint powers agreement amendment tonight.
President Sandy, members of the committee, basically what you have here is an addition. It's an addendum to our special operations group. And what you have before you is the addition of the fire department onto our UAS team. We've had, it was merely took time to get this vetted, to make sure that we were in line, but we've integrated them into our UAS team as a force multiplier, and both the fire service and police are benefiting from their expertise, so we would ask you approve.
Thank you, chief. Any comments or concerns? Moved by Weber, second by Mock. Doing all the heavy lifting on this end of the table. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item 2.7, budget amendments for the various departments. A, Health Department, nursing fees. B, wastewater treatment plant fund 5200, project 8326, and wastewater treatment plant engineering services agreement. Item C, wastewater treatment plant fund 5200, project 8199, for the facility plan. And item D, wastewater collection fund 5200 for tapping fees. Would you like to talk about the nursing health department?
Yes, President Sandy, members of the committee of the whole.
Ms. Swanson.
We have a very brief budget amendment description there for you. It's basically related to additional funding that we receive from Grand Forks County for our services, nursing services that we provide at the Grand Forks County jail. We took advantage of the opportunity to clean up the entire budget with all the line items during the amendment process, rather than a two-step process of amending the budget and then making the necessary transfers. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any comments for Ms. Swanson? Any concerns?
Do we do these one at a time, then?
We may as well do this one on its own. Item A, Mr. Weber moves approval, second by Mock. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Item 2.7A passes.
Ms. Parvi, would you like to address parts B, C, and D?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. The first budget amendment was for the SCADA project updates for the wastewater treatment plant, and that was approved in 2020, although the project was complete in 2021. So funding was approved as part of that budget. It's just completing the project this year. Also with the next budget amendment for project 8199 for the facility plan, the project was also approved in 2020. It was in the budget. It's just we finished the project this year, so transferring the funds over, amending the budget to reconcile that. And then the tapping fees, this is just something that we've had new development, so there's additional tapping fees which wasn't budgeted, so we're bringing it from cash reserves to be able to pay for that.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Parvi. Any big questions? Mr. Bean moves approval. Is there a second by Weber? Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Parvi.
Item 2.8, create district for project 8346. No, create district for project 8346, District 758, paving streetlights for Kingsview 8th subdivision. Mr. Leiberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, committee members. This section of Kingsview 8th is an ongoing residential development near 62nd Avenue South. The developer is KHL Investments, and this past summer, they privately funded the installation of underground utilities. This project before you is the second phase to special assess the paving and streetlights, portion of that in accordance with our developer agreement. Our estimate for this work, special assessed amount is roughly $1.9 million. We are recommending creation of the special assessment district and approval of the engineer's report at this time, direction to proceed forward with plans and specifications.
Any comments or questions? Relatively routine. Yeah, great. Moved by Weigel, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Item 2.9, create district for project 8399. For project 8399, District 759, reconstruct Fourth Avenue South from Cottonwood Street to Walnut Street. Mr. Leiberman.
Thank you. This project is one that we are proposing for construction in 2022. This is about a block and a half section of Fourth Avenue South. It's just east of the Grand Forks Senior Center, if you're familiar with that area. It is existing graniteoid pavement severely shattered. In my opinion, it's probably one of the worst stretches of pavement we have in this city. So we're proposing reconstruction of this with concrete to include curb and gutter and provide an appropriate driving surface. This is subject to an 80/20 cost share, so the city will pay for 80% of the estimated construction of $554,000. So the city share, we estimate to be $444,000, which would be paid for from Fund 4815, where we have $2 million budgeted for 2022. The remainder, 20%, would be special assessed to the benefiting properties. So with that, we're recommending approval of the engineer's report, creation of a special assessment district, and direction for engineering to proceed with plans and specifications.
Any comments? Mr. Weber, question?
This is such a heavily trafficked street. Why is the assessment just going to those, I believe it's just going to those properties in the diagram? Is that correct?
That is correct. Per city policies, this is a classified street, and the proposed district boundaries have slightly different rules than local streets. It's actually a wider district area than if it were a local street. So the special assess portion would be shared by more properties than just a local street would.
You've actually spread it out a little bit more than you normally would.
Yes.
Can we special assess the folks in East Grand Forks? Because they use this road a lot. I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Bean. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 210, create districts for project 8429.1, District 764.1, Mill and Overlay of South Ninth Street. Project 8429.02, District 764.2, Mill and Overlay of South 19th Street. Project 8429.03, District 764.3, Mill and Overlay, South 23rd Street. And project 8429.04, District 764.4, Mill and Overlay, Red Dot Place. Mr. Leiberman.
Thank you. This is, this represents our annual contract to Mill and Overlay Asphalt Streets citywide. When we evaluate potential projects, we receive inputs from the public, from residents' concerns. We receive input from public works and their observations, and our staff's familiarity with street conditions. This year, we evaluated roughly 2,000 potential projects, and we identified these four as being in the worst condition and requiring some asphalt Mill and Overlay in 2022. The estimated construction cost for this is $933,000. It is subject to an 80/20 cost share, so the city will pay 80% of that, or roughly $623,000, from Fund 4815. And the remaining 20% would be special assessed to the benefiting properties. With that, we are requesting the districts be created for these locations and approval of the engineer's report and direction to proceed with plans and specifications.
Great. Any comments or questions, concerns about the asphalt roads, the Mill and overlays? Moved by Weber, second by Mock. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman.
Item 211, approve plans and specs for project 8366, Mill and Overlay of Mill Road from Gateway Drive to North Washington. Mr. Cranko.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. The product for you is using approximately $480,000 of Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. Last time this road was milled and overlaid was back in about 1999. So this asphalt road has seen some wear and tear. It's got some rutting issues on it. Overall, we're looking at a city share of approximately $456,000, and we're ready to get this thing out the door and ready to bid. We're anticipating a bid opening in March, and staff is recommending approval of plans and specs.
Any questions? Mr. Bean?
Just one question. Understanding the Mill and Overlay, will there be added asphalt depth put on with the overlay, or is it just surfacing?
We will be milling and overlaying, so we're going to be milling out about two inches, and we're going to be putting back about two inches.
But you're only putting back two inches. So the road, asphalt depth is adequate for the next whatever years for heavy truck traffic?
Haven't gone into, unfortunately, I'm not overly attached to the project. This is being designed by Houston Engineering, so I do not know for certain if they've looked into that or not.
Did you have a follow-up question to that? Nope. Okay.
Fine.
So are you recommending we, you think we should move forward with this with the notion that our engineering team should...
If we have a question, we'll get it answered before city council.
Should make sure. Excellent. Okay. So is that a move, motion by Mr. Bean? Great. Second by Weber. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Cranko, item 212, bid award for project 8460 for 2022/23 contracted electrical services.
Thank you, Council President Sandy. This is our standard electrical services contract. We bid this out every two years or so. This ends up handling all of our electrical services that we can't necessarily take care of in-house because our staff is busy with other items. We received one bid on this from Fusion Automation. They were a contractor who did this work in 2020 and 2021. And even though we only received one bid on this contract, we do not think that we will get better bids or more bids if we were to send this out for rebidding. And with that, staff is recommending awarding the bid to Fusion Automation for $172,900.
Great. Any questions or comments related to, yeah, Mr. Weber?
Had there been an estimate? Is this in line with what you would have anticipated?
It's about 3% over, but it's well in line.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bean. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 213, lease for a payloader, sole source. Ms. Lipsch, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, committee members. I'm here, excuse me, asking for a lease of a 644 John Deere front-end loader for the collections department as a sole source bid. And you can obviously see the reasons why we sole sourced the loader. So if there's any questions, I can...
Any questions? Have to have a special front-end thingamabob to fit our other stuff, so.
Move approval.
Moved by Bean, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 214, amendment to professional services agreement with AE2S, task order six for fiber connections, project 8056. Ms. Mock, are you...
Yeah, could I request to be recused?
Right. Is there a motion to recuse? Moved by Weber, second by Bean. All those in favor of recusing, Ms. Mock. Item 214, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Mock is recused.
Good evening, Ms. Parvi.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This project was initially started to do a fiber connection between the baling facility and the booster station, and the baling facility and our north end water tower, with the opportunity for some ARPA funds. The IT department was able to put about 12 years' worth of projects into adding on to this project. So this is an amendment to the services agreement to be able to design that and bid that out. I didn't list all of the areas that we were planning to connect, just because I didn't want them to be out in the public, but we can provide those to you. The main goal was to provide security measures, to provide service non, so that we continue to not have service interruptions, and then they'll just improve the network connections at for, for all these facilities as well.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Weber?
So there's ARPA funds. What is the city's share on this?
That's a good question. I don't think there is a share. It's all ARPA funds that are dedicated to this.
I'll move approval.
With the exception, we do have funding from this year that we haven't utilized for that first initial part of the agreement.
Great. Thanks. Great. We're doubling down. Great. Moved by Weber, second by Bean. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously with Ms. Mock being recused.
Item 215, North Dakota Section 5310, funding application for 2023 funds and authorizing resolution for the funding application. Mr. Bergman.
Good evening. Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. What this is, is our annual run for the monies, again, as I call it, with our federal partners and our state partners. What we're looking for is approval to apply for $114,482 in federal funds for these two different projects. One is for the mobility manager position, which covers 80% federal dollars on those wages and benefits, and then also one replacement van that we would need for the facility.
Any questions? Move, yeah, Mr. Weber.
So I recognize this is not what these dollars are for, but bus stop shelters is not going to be funded by this, but it seems that, I've heard in the past that we were going to be improving our bus stop shelters. What can we look for there?
Well, there's two problems that we have there. One, we only got one bid on it, and so we're having to figure out why we only had the one bid, because that is a requirement. The state wants us to get more than one bid, and we had sent out all the information to them. And two, it just ended up being too late in the year, and now we're talking about 18 months out before we can get the materials. So we have two issues that showed up. The one with the one bid, I think, is going to be resolved here shortly, and then it's just a matter of getting the project ordered, and like I said, 18 months out is what they told us right now. Those shelters that we're looking at are the ones that are going to be replaced on University Avenue. And then we've also got the funds that would replace the one by the YMCA and in front of the Salvation Army also. But the other four would be on the university campus area. And then as we start working around the city, we'll be looking at the other ones then.
Is there any way that we can take care of this and wait for the funds? It doesn't work that way, does it?
No. Federal funds is, you've got to spend them when you can get them. And that's our, that's our whole problem, is that we've had to delay this project. So you're looking at about two years out before we had everything done.
Thanks for that information. If it's not related to this, I'll move approval of this tonight. Thanks.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
Thank you. Item 2.6 and all of its attachments, Olive Ann Boutique Hotel Tax Incentive Proposal. Mr. Phelan, good evening.
Council President Sandy, members of the committee of the whole. Thanks for having me here this evening. Also online virtually is Mr. Phil Giese, who is the prime developer of this particular project, and also Michaela Hewitt, who serves as our advisor and director for Baker Tilly. So I'll summarize, and they're certainly available for any questions, and we'll provide answers. This is an exciting project. Obviously, it's a boutique hotel, and I'm going to focus on the boutique hotel, even though it's integrated with an event center as part of this particular project. And as the attachments provide, we started this project in 2019, prior to the pandemic. Mr. Giese has, I think, maybe a stroke of good luck in a bad situation with the pandemic, has taken another look at this particular project, and coming two years later is looking at the boutique hotel in a different form and fashion. He has moved forward with the event center, and there was an event this weekend. So the event center is on the fifth floor of the existing building, so that's up and going as part of this particular project. And now really, our focus is on this particular project, is the boutique hotel and those facilities that will be contained and supporting the hotel in the existing building. So what I'm talking about this evening is the boutique hotel and its ancillary functions in that, as we move forward. This is an 89-unit hotel and meant to be a boutique hotel, so it has a specific niche, and really is meant to drive traffic. And there's, there are some particular projects in Fargo, if you look along Broadway, and I sense this is kind of a business hotel that we're looking at our own community. I think it's really extremely important that we move this particular project forward. As we go through the project, it does have several things that are going to support it, from the lobby to the fitness to salon and laundry that will be contained in the existing building. And if you look through the staff report that Mr. Brooks and I did, working with Mr. Giese back in 2019, he was looking at about a $36 million project. This particular project is about a $25.6 million project, and so it's been scaled back. It's been scaled back in the sense of the event center ended up in the existing facility. The boutique hotel is kind of on to itself, and it's a reduction in the commercial space. And obviously, we know after the pandemic, commercial is in doubt in how things are, whether that's been in the existing building of Mr. Giese. Also, also looking at the boutique at hotel itself, too, as it strictly is a hotel. There are not condos in this particular project. It's strictly an 89-room hotel with all the ancillary portions of it. Based upon that review, we did move forward with a third-party review. And as part of our third-party review, I just want to let you know, just for the record from a public policy perspective, this particular project does meet the requirements of our, as US public policymakers, from being a project incentive. It meets our downtown development principles. It meets all the things that we wanted to do at Demers Avenue and all the downtown developments. So when you look at this project, I've added all those various plans that we've worked on over the last several years, and similar to all the projects that we've... on over the last several years, and similar to all the projects that we've approved in recent history, again, this is another really strategic project for us to move our community forward that we had planned for. Ms. Michaela Hewitt did take a look at this particular project, and I wanted, I was talking to council member Weber, just to kind of explain the two various parts of this particular project. As you recall, this was also a Renaissance Zone project, both projects, both the boutique hotel and the event center were Renaissance Zones in addition. And so when we looked at this project, both qualify as a Renaissance Zone, they are in the downtown area. And so the event center has been approved as a five-year 100% Renaissance Zone, also the boutique hotel has also been approved as a five-year 100%. That's been our standard city policy, and so both those entities have been approved. When Ms. Hewitt looked at this particular project, what we're asked, Mr. Giese asked for, an up to 15-year tax incentive at 100%. And so we know that the five-year is a part of that 15 years that's already been approved. And so really, our focus is on that additional 10 years to get us to the 15, what was required as part of this particular project. And when Ms. Hewitt took a look at it, we have separated out the event center, and so the event center is not part of the additional 10-year incentive, that, that particular project, we have found, can stand on its own with that five-year Renaissance Zone. And so we're just going to focus on the boutique hotel. Again, Mr. Giese did ask for the maximum of 10 additional 100%, and what their, what the recommendation is, is that we'd move forward with a 10-year tax incentive, the first five years of those would be at 100%, and then the preceding, or the succeeding five years would be at 80% exemption, so not the full, full 15 years at 100%, and the scaled-down version, which is just the boutique hotel itself, which is separate from the event center. I asked Mr. Hodak what that really means, and in just the event center, that's going to be, is currently on the fifth floor, Mr. Hodak is looking at an estimated increased dollar value of taxable value of about $1 million. And so at 1.5% with our commercial value, that's, that will drive an additional $15,000 in taxable value through all the different entities once that five-year tax abatement is up. Looking at the boutique hotel, Mr. Hodak is looking at valuing that particular property at around $15 million from what he sees right now. So if you look at that investment at 1.5%, again, that's, that would be estimated at about $225,000 taxable value that would eventually come on to the city within that, you know, after that 15-years period of time. That's without any inflation on that particular facility else. But just so you have some general understanding of that, we did have a, when I say we, Mr. Gostad, Ms. Hewitt, Mr. Giese, and Mr. Conlon from Community Development, we had a meeting with Mr. Giese to go over the findings with him, to say that we are going to recommend moving forward with only the boutique hotel with additional 10 years, but only the first five of that will be 100%, and the succeeding will be at 80%. That was acceptable to Mr. Giese, and at that, with that recommendation and approval, he is intending to move forward with the project and get started as soon as possible, and certainly we hope that's in, in the construction year of 2022. What I'm asking for this evening is that you would move this boutique hotel forward to the local government advisory committee for further review and recommendation. And as you recall, anything over five years, we need the county commission, and we need the Grand Forks School Board to approve anything over five years. And so our first starting point is to go to the local government advisory committee, review the findings, review the recommendations, and that comes back to the city council to move forward with a public hearing on the particular project. And then as we set the public hearing, we have gone to both the county commission and the school board to get their authorization, and eventually it ends up at the city council for final approval at that public hearing. So this is really kind of, I'm asking you to kick it forward, but I want to let you know what the recommendation is, so when we go to local government advisory, we intend to bring this as the recommendation forward, and so I want to know, have you know that in advance, even though that's going to come back to you for more, a preliminary recommendation as part of setting a public hearing date on that. With that, there are, those attachments are contained in there. Mr. Giese has also provided some floor plans that are attached, some renderings of the particular building for your review. Ms. Hewitt is also available for any further discussions, her memorandum is placed into the record, too, as part of that. So with that, Mr. Sandy, I don't have anything further, but I, I know Mr. Giese and Ms. Hewitt are available for any questions.
I'd be interested, Mr. Weber, this is your ward, how, what's your take, or do you have any comments or questions?
Couple of questions. First of all, Mr. Giese's done a lot of development in our community. Has he ever previously asked for a tax incentive?
Council President Sandy and Mr. Weber, I think we had that conversation on Friday, and I think Mr. Giese, maybe he's a little sheepish about this because he, he's never asked for an incentive, and obviously, he's, he's built a lot of senior living, he's developed other properties, and this is the first time that he's doing it, and he really feels like he needs this as part of this riskier investment of a, of a hotel. And we know that we've spent more time in recent history knocking down hotels than building hotels, and so this is a riskier venture, and I even talked to our steady Eddie City Assessor, Paul Hodak, and he, and he did say, this is a, this is a riskier investment being a hotel and knowing kind of where we're at. But I think, even when Governor Bergman was here, I think with the downtown niche, that there is a need for this in our community, and as the governor said, you perhaps don't need a large hotel on the outskirts of town or near the edge of town, but downtown, we really need this as part of that. So I would have Mr. Giese follow up with any further words on, on what his needs are.
Mr. Giese, are you interested in speaking?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit if everybody can hear me okay. First of all, as a former farm boy and heavy equipment operator, I cannot wait to see this payloading you guys are leasing at the city level. And I can quote the president saying, "This guy's got a special front-end thingamabob." Am I right?
That's it? You got it?
Hopefully, you'll let me run it someday.
For sure.
No, really, I don't have much to add. I think Todd would agree with your job of explaining it. I was hoping to get a little bit bigger tax abatement on this, but the project works, I think. It's going to be a bit risky. The construction costs this next year are going to be ugly. You know, I've invested in other hotels in the past, and typically, you're looking at, you know, $60,000, $70,000 per door. This building's going to be about $145,000 per door, so the construction cost is pretty significant, which adds a lot of risk to the project. So unless you have any other questions, I don't have really too much to add at all. And by the way, in 30 years of business, I have never, ever asked for a tax, TIF or a tax abatement or any kind of assistance from any city or government authority in 30 years. This is the first time that I've asked for it.
And having a grocery store downtown and now having a boutique hotel downtown, these are tremendous pivot points, game changers for our community. There had originally been some talk about making use of the opportunity zone, federal opportunity zones. I'm guessing that, that just didn't work out, or did that program ever even come to fruition?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Weber, I excluded to say that, but in the staff report, this is our first program using the opportunity zone, so it will be used. You know, it's getting later, later in the game of the opportunity zone, so years have passed by, but yeah, this is our first project. It's noted in the financials, I think it's like a $6 to $7 million opportunity zone, you know, recorded investment as part of this. So I'm sure Mr. Giese's worked with he and his group, and Michaela Hewitt also reviewed that as part of this. That's seen as more of an add-on, and it was-
Absolutely.
The federal added, it was meant to just try to enhance projects, to move them forward, and partnering with state and local incentives. And so at least we have an example of a, we can look back to say during that time, we did have one project, at least, and hopefully have more, but time is, time is lapsing on its value.
Right. Well, with all of that, we're very fortunate this is, this is moving forward, so I'll recommend approval of the staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation to move it forward to the community advisory-
Yes.
Yes. So that's a motion by Weber. Mr. Veen, do you have a comment?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Veen. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Mock?
So just to clarify, the ask was for 15 years at 100%, and the recommendation is for 10 years, five years at 100%, and additional five at 80% for just the event space?
It'll, ultimately, it'll be 10 years at 100%, and then years 11 through 15 will be at 80% just for the boutique hotel.
So the 11 to 15 is just for the boutique hotel?
And the first five years, we've already approved.
You've already approved that.
So tonight, we're just approving the additional five years at 100% and then five years at 80%.
Correct. So when we go, you know, we want to-
On just the hotel.
We need to mention the five years, just because it's part of, of the 15, but when we go to bring it back to you ultimately, it'll be a 10-year payment of low tax, tax incentive, property tax incentive. But tonight, you're just approving it, moving to the committee.
Right.
Certainly, that's going to be our recommendation, going to that group, and Mr. Sandy, you're the one who's chaired that group as, as part of the community.
Any idea when that meeting would be? Are we going to try to get that done this month?
We're going to try to get it done, if not this month, by early next month.
Okay.
Yep, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Because I know, Mr. Giese, even though, you know, this is a draft recommendation, you want some finality, so that as, like with all these projects, you start spending real money on design.
Input costs aren't going down.
Yeah.
Right, so sooner you purchase. So any other, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hewitt, for being here, and Mr. Giese, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 217, Grand Forks Renaissance Zone Project GF72, Cloud Nine Events. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. As you just heard, the development project was already approved for Renaissance Zone Project in February of 2020. This is a request for the leaseholder of the event center to get a five-year incentive. Even though the city is giving nothing, this is a state income tax incentive that they're requesting, city council still has to approve it.
Relatively routine. Yes, Mr. Weber, moves approval, second by Mock. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Item 218, Northern Plains Nitrogen Letter of Intent Extension. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy and members of the committee, I'm back here again for the Northern Plains Nitrogen Letter of Intent, and as you recall, we have a letter intent for water, wastewater, and stormwater to work with NPN on servicing that particular project. And as you recall, the primary way that we were intending to serve this nitrogen fertilizer plant is with our wastewater reuse or gray water. And so obviously, there's also potable water and stormwater as part of that, but the, the prime purpose is to use our gray water. We are in the midst of finalizing, as you recall, there's a, there was a new airport master plan, there's a new plan to renew the north-south runway and expand an east-west runway to try to keep the airport in operation as long as possible, and that's why we, we've been working to update this plume study also. So we're looking to wrap that up in the near term, and I would, I would suspect early next year, we'll have a, a final draft of a report that we'll share with our partners in UND and the Grand Forks Airport Authority and the Grand Forks Region EDC as we move forward. So the intent is, the project, as we well know, is, it's only gotten better in the sense of, you know, it's a $2.5 to $3 billion project. We know we're likely to be served with natural gas from the Bakken, so we'll have additional natural gas, probably lower cost. So that's happening between, that was always a dream of the project. And then obviously, we're still underserved, prices are up for nitrogen fertilizer, and we got, and we may be growing more and more corn, which needs fertilizer. So a lot of the things are looking up for the particular project, but the site itself is, has some challenges from the airport perspective, so we're working through those details to see if that site in particular can work for all of our partners. But really, this letter of intent is not specifically to that site, but it's really to serve them. I have had no conversations with anyone who is interested in being served by our gray water in Grand Forks, and in Grand Forks, that's about 8 million gallons per day now that we have East Grand Forks wastewater coming through. So in the next six months, we don't have somebody on the hook that's looking for it at this point in time, so I think things will shake out with this particular project in the next six months, and we'll know more. Mr. Mackey, you've, he's been in front of you before, he continues to be enthusiastic and optimistic about an investment, but more work to come in. And obviously, the Jobs Development Authority Help Fund has been helping fund that plume analysis, so I suspect it'll be in front of a growth fund committee and a Jobs Development Authority sometime early next year.
Any comments or thoughts? Hello? Mr. Veen? Well, Mr. Phelan, how much water were they looking at needing? This is gray water, right?
It is.
Which is majority of our water would, we would convert, they would reuse, or I guess they have to purify or whatever, that they wanted to get to their angel tears?
Yep. Mayor, or Council President Sandy and Mr. Veen, they were looking at about, I recall, about 6 to 7 million gallons per day, and we were going to, at the time, you know, time has gone on so long, in the meantime, we've had growth, we've had Red River Biore refinery, we've interconnected with the city of East Grand Forks, so we're, our, we were actually not going to be able to serve them with the whole amount, but now, as time has gone by, we have, we have enough wastewater to serve them totally. So we were going to supplement, as you recall, with potable water to supplement that, but along the way, we've got, we've got more wastewater permitted than we ever thought. Again, the permits are in the city of Grand Forks's name, so whatever we negotiate, an entity has to come to the city and ask for a portion of our, our industrial permits, whether it's wastewater or water in this case. So they're, they're all taken out in the city of Grand Forks's name.
Moved by Veen, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Weber?
Question?
Certainly.
So the, the next item on the agenda is also water-intensive. How do these two potentially interact?
Council President Sandy and, and Council Member Weber, well, I think they interact in this way, at first I thought, is that, I always thought NPN, whether it was going to come or not, was a signal that value-added ag is going to come to our region and come to our region bigger rather than smaller. So I think they're interlinked there. There's something that's to this region and to what's happening. I think they would interplay well in the sense of the Fu Fang Group Wet Corn Mill is going to have about 3 million gallons per day of wastewater. So, you know, when I talk about the 8 million gallons per day, suddenly, we have 11 million gallons a day of wastewater, and so we have more gray water or wastewater to sell than we know what to do with. And certainly, even if we sell wastewater affluent to NPN, some of it's going to get returned to us, it's going to be higher strength because they're going to use it up and tell them, you know, they don't want to use it up anymore and give it back to us, you know, that's what we're here for. We do the tough stuff at the end of the day, but they play off well off one another. And I think there's other agribusiness opportunities that are looking at Grand Forks, you know, when somebody hears about River of Viore Refinery, or they hear about JR Simplot, or they hear about this Fu Fang Wet Corn Mill, it, it rises attention that there's other opportunities for all the crops that we grow in our region.
From, from a water perspective, they play off well, they play well with one another.
They do.
We, with, with moving, the possibility of moving both of these forward, we are increasingly a, a chemical industry community, all value-add ag, so that's, that's wonderful, but this would be even more truck traffic, even more rail traffic, yes. Very good. Thanks.
I think NPN would have their own hazmat and fire department, if I recall correctly, which would add value to the other industries that are on the north end as well, assuming they would be willing to share resources. They're not going to want their neighbors having an issue, so I think ultimately, it probably would be good for all the industry.
And of course, this is all dependent upon the plume study, which we're hoping will be completed sometime in the next couple of months.
Yep.
Great. Any other comments? Ms. Doppler or Mr. Weigel? Hearing none. Okay, there's a motion and a second to extend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Last but not least, item 219, Fu Fang Group Development Agreement Update. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, members of the committee, I'm going to take team this with Mr. Gostad, so I know there were some questions. this with Mr. Gossett, so I know there were some questions. What I'd like to go over is, we have some images that are attached that relate to the infrastructure, so as I go through the infrastructure pieces, I can kind of talk about what other things that we're working on. And I know there were, I had some conversations about when we see the development agreement, and speaking with Mr. Gossett, it's still in draft form, and the other side of the table has not provided any review responses, we are meeting with them later this week. And so, the reason why we don't have that is, it's still a negotiated item, and not a public document at this point in time. But as I go through this, I think we'll have some other ideas, and I've gotten some good feedback from, from some of you, and so, I'll, I'll just go through these images, and really, tonight is to get some feedback, things that you've heard from the community, with things that you'd like us to do, that maybe we haven't covered as part of our details. I'll say, number one, we're working with, across the city of Grand Forks, so when we say this is an all-in project, that means almost every city department is part of that, so we are meeting, we are meeting with departments of engineering, finance, building inspections, planning, waterworks, and public works operations, along with, we've engaged some of our, our local, regional, national consultants on this, it's that big of a deal, but you know, it's an all-in opportunity for all of our city departments to be part of the particular project. I will share, I'll go through some of these diagrams when they're, when they come up. I don't know if you, if they show up on your screen yet? Are they there? Okay. So, this is the Fu Fang site, right here, the wet corn milling site. I'll just orientate you, we have I-29 going, coming north, our wastewater treatment plant, our lagoons are right here, this is the Allen Windpower Rail Yard right here, our solid waste landfill is right here in this area, so JR Simplot's down here, off of Gateway Drive or Highway 2. So, you can see, it's kind of really in our industrial cluster, in our community. We, we talked a little bit about the, the airport, and if you look at where NPN site is, NPN site is right in this area, just south of our solid waste landfill, so you can see where that's juxtaposed. When I talk about the east-west runway, that's going to get expanded, it's this particular runway right here, it's going to be expanded so that, both to the west and to the east, so that it can handle commercial traffic, while the north-south runway is being reconstructed over the next several years. That's the orientation of the particular site. This is a more of a full-frontal view of, of the particular facility. Red River Biorefinery is right down in this area, and JR Simplot is further south on this particular map. Want to highlight, and this is Mill Road going north, and this is North Washington, or 81 going north, right in this area. So, if you, as you look at the site, this is I-29, you look at this development right here, and so, part of it, when I talk about planning and zoning, has been asked, we're going to serve this, this particular site with all the different water-related functions and transportation-related functions, which means this property, that is, some of this property is not annexed into the city, however, it will be served by water, wastewater, stormwater in some form or fashion, so there'll be a conversation as this project moves forward about annexation policy, and who gets brought in, because we're going to be serving a larger pool, as we move forward. This is the site plan itself, and you can see there's various features, and we've shown this on PowerPoint slides before. You know, it's, it's an industrial facility, there's water cooling towers, and so, one of the big things, we talked about Northern Plains Nitrogen, were the cooling towers from a visual plume, and then also the thermal plume for the, the more invisible plume. So, I suspect this will have a thermal plume to it, not as high as NPN, but it'll, if you look through the initial site plan, they have four cooling towers in various locations on this particular site, as you move forward. We have had conversations with the Fu Fang Group, they are not at the point where they've done final engineering design on this particular plot, they're more at the preliminary engineering, so they haven't, they don't have a final design on, for the air permit, so they haven't gone to the state of North Dakota, asked for an air permit, they're, they're, that's too far into the process, they're more in a preliminary stage, where they haven't worked through all the particulars with all the permitting, but that will come now. And I think they're waiting on the development agreement to move forward, so they have a, more of a solidified commitment with the community, before they really move forwards, because once you move forward with all those kind of designs, you're going to invest a lot of real money, and, I mean, contacting some real expertise as part of consultants. This is the first, we talked about, this is that raw water, and we've talked quite a bit, that we're intending to serve this facility with raw water, from our intake here on the Red Lake and the Red River, and so, we're going to put additional two pumps in that particular facility, for an additional eight MGD of water supply, and we're going to draw that from the Red River. We're going to use the existing transmissional pipeline that goes down DeMure's Avenue, and then, we're going to build a pump station in and around where our water treatment plant is, and then, we're going to build two dual lines of, that will be able to serve not only Fu Fang, but that agribusiness park in general, is what we're intending to do. We do have an application that we've moved forward with, to the North Dakota Department of Water Resources, that answers to the State Water Commission, which the governor chairs. So, we have submitted an application for the raw water supply, to get a 60% cost share for this particular project, so that's been submitted. Right now, what they've let us know is, they're intending to have us on the February State Water Commission meeting agenda, so that's the meeting we're targeting. Hopefully, when we get the 60% cost share, they're not going to give us, you know, 60% of 17 million, but they're going to give 60% of the engineering, the upfront engineering, while we figure out all the particulars. So, that, that's will be what we'll ask for in this particular way. The other part is potable water infrastructure, so when you look at this map, when I talked about, you know, we're going to be not only serving the Fu Fang Group, we're also going to be able to serve areas around there, and so, you can see where, we're going to be adding water distribution lines, not only south of the facility, but also up Highway 81 or North Washington, we're going to serve it down 27th Avenue North, and probably further up on the facility, around 33rd Avenue. And so, when you look at a lot of these properties, that haven't been served with water supply, not only the Fu Fang plant, but we'll have area, other areas that will have to have water supply in and around there. The other part we'll have to engage in is, right now, this particular property's in Faulkner Township, so we're going to follow up with Faulkner Township and give them a briefing on this, because we're going to be looking to annex property that's currently in their, in their area, so we'll give them briefings on what's going on. The other thing is, a lot of these commercial properties are, along 81, are in Faulkner Township, they are not annexed into the city of Grand Forks. So, we want to let them know what we're doing here, as we move forward. But you can see, along the way, the other group that we need to engage with is Agassi Rural Water, and these lines right here are Agassi's lines that go through the particular property. So, we'll have to, another meeting that we'll have to do is engage with Agassi Rural Water, because we're, we're going to be in their district, and, and of course, they have lines that go right through this property, that's just how they did things, so we'll have to have some engagement in that form and fashion. So, you can see how, what we need to do, the, serve the plant, are in red, and then, there's all these other yellow lines that would serve the larger areas, so that'll, that'll be, have to be a discussion when we get there, not only on annexation and planning and zoning, but also, how much are we going to serve the adjacent areas with infrastructure? That'll be a city council conversation. This is the wastewater, and so, if you look right here on this particular site, we have, we have a pump station centered in this, to the south, which we serve with Red River Biorefinery, we're going to need a new wastewater pump station, which will be located right here. And then, this is the forest main, the forest main will go down here, and then, we're planning to build a new forest main to our wastewater treatment plant. And so, that will run parallel with the existing one, the reason why we did that, is that it's going to be a lot of flow through that with Simplot and Red River Biorefinery, other expansions, and we only have, we have a single line of failure with that forest main, and it was built in the early 1960s, so we're, we're planning some redundancy in that area. The thing is, when you put a wastewater pump station right here, or lift station, not only are we going to serve this property, but we'll be able to serve that, those adjacent areas too, with sewer service too, which leads into that annexation discussion, that we'll be able to serve a larger area. Again, these are just some areas of how we would serve those different areas with sanitary The other part is, the English Cooley diversion is the northern border of this particular site, so it's kind of the end of the line of our, our ability to, to grow north, is this particular site. And you can see, when the Corps of Engineers designed the flow, the flow for the north part of the site is supposed to go towards the Cooley, and the flow to the south is supposed to go to the English Cooley, and so, that's how they separated this property back in the day. But you can see, the red lines are the storm sewer lines that we need to place in, the yellow is the detention pond that needs to be placed in there. So, we're looking at ways how to serve this. Again, this will not only serve the Fu Fang site, but it likely will serve a broader area that's already existing and built in infrastructure. So, it's kind of the one, two, three, water, wastewater, stormwater will have some service in the area. Finally, on the street side, the kind of rounding out the four big infrastructure pieces, is the transportation side. So, right now, 27th Avenue North is only improved to about right here, to where the Red River Biorefinery is, you go into the road, the rest is just a township road that is a headache every year, working with Faulkner Township, and, because you got truck traffic and all that kind of stuff. So, our intent is to, Al Grassers got a, kind of a, a design of that particular down here, is that you'd have two lanes, you'd have a turn lane in the middle, and we're probably looking at some stacking on the side of the road too, because we're going to have trucks coming into this particular site. That will also require us to have some improvements on the Highway 81, and so, that's what this particular area is, right there. And then, you can see, there's a secondary access we're looking at further north too, so they, they have more than one access. So, that access would either go here, on, on 30th, or on 33rd. And then, of course, that will require us to speak with the, and work with the North Dakota DOT. So, really, we're working as a city team, and I wanted to let you know, of all those infrastructure pieces that I discussed, that I won't, I won't belabor, that there's some preliminary work that we've already started, and so, we've worked on just some support, try, to try to get us to the development agreement itself, so that we can start defining what these infrastructure pieces are, what kind of cost shares, so we've been working to try to get that into the development agreement, and we have done that, as we move forward. As you can see, there's also a lot of utility corridors, so we've also, before the snow hit, we've looked at these utility corridors, whether it's for the raw water or the sanitary, all the things that are going, so that we know what kind of right-of-way we have, and what kind of, we need, so we've done that as an early out too, looking forward. We've also engaged, I showed you the map of the stormwater master plan, we started some of that work too, on where that water needs to drain, whether it's the English Cooley or, or to the diversion itself, so we've, we've started some of that work. Also, we have started work on the wastewater collection in site with the pump station and the collection lines at Forest Main, we've done some preliminary work on that. And of course, you know, we've been working quite, quite a lot on the wastewater master, treatment plant, master plant, so that continues, and so, instead of just doing, we were looking at, doing a portion of it, and we're now looking at probably having to do everything, including those things that really directly involve Fu Fang and their development itself. So, we've been working on all, on all those fronts. One additional thing is traffic. We know we're working on traffic, so we're, we've engaged with, on a traffic study, that the North Dakota DOT is going to, going to need as part of that too. So, I mentioned a lot of state agencies, so we're going to, we are and will be working with the North Dakota DOT, the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. On the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, we'll work with them primarily on water and waste, or wastewater and stormwater activities, on the permitting and the funding side. North Dakota DOT will work with them on the permitting and the funding, on all those sorts, sorts of things. We're also working with the North Dakota Department of Water Resources, and the State Water Commission, and again, we're going to be working with them mainly in that raw water, and the potable water supply from a permitting perspective, and also a funding perspective with them. And then, along the way, we will work with the Bank of North Dakota on the financing part of it, they'll be critically important on the financing, and Commerce will have some role too, but those are the state agencies that we will be working with. The other group that we've, we've brought into the fold is Black and Beach, and so, as you, as you recalled, when we were working with NPN, we wanted to make sure this is a large industrial facility with Northern Plains Nitrogen, that we engage Black and Beach, because sometimes, they're the designer of these large industrial facilities, sometimes they're a reviewer, and so, we have engaged them similar to what we do with Northern Plains Nitrogen, because they've worked on wet corn mills like this, and so, they're going to provide us advice on what we ought to, to know about these facilities, how we need to engage them, and how, how, things we wouldn't know without asking them, so we've already engaged them in that vein too, and we're even going to have a session with them, with city staff, that are involved, starting next week, and so that we can get a perspective, whether it's health, safety, welfare, water supply, air, all those things we ought to know about, so we're, we're going to get engaged in that, so we can all get smarter on all the things that people have given, that, you know, we don't have answers, but we, we formulated a team here that will get the answers, and reduce as much of the risk to the community as possible, you know? Doing big things, historic things are going to have zero risk to them, but we want to make sure that we really think through all the, all the particulars. So, with Black and Beach, they'll be involved in reviewing design, construction, operation, permitting, and help, really help support our staff, and our local consultants on this particular, on these particular projects. The one thing I would like to move forward, and we talked a little bit about the payment of taxes, and as you recall, the preliminary requests, and that will go, likely go into the development agreement, or has gone in the development agreement, is a 90% payment of taxes for the first 10 years, and then, the succeeding, or years 11 through 20 would be a 75% tax exemption. That will go in the form of a payment of taxes, and if we're going to move forward with the local government group, I would ask that we would add that one too, and get a, have that reviewed at the same time, and knowing that would be a recommendation that is going to be, hopefully, get finalized and would end up in the development agreement, but, you know, just getting through that whole tax incentive piece takes a couple months, in the meantime, hopefully, we can come back with a, an agreement, so I would plan to put that one on there at the same time, as the Olive and Boutique Hotel. There's been some conversations about, with the Grand Forks Airport Authority, to make sure with this particular site, with the expansion of the east-west runway, is to look at not only air qual, air quality, which is Fu Fang's responsibilities for air quality, Title V permits, working with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, that's, that's their role, they have to get a state permit, and really, a crown jewel of getting a facility like this done, is that air permit, because you can't function without this air permit. The other part that we've had some conversations with the airport authorities, ensuring, just like we did with the NPN project, this, this is on the other side of Interstate, I-29, it's not within a zone of, a compatibility zone, where the, if you look at an airport master plan, where this is an excluded site, however, they do want to be part of the planning of this, and be part of the information gathering, just because with that expansion of the east-west runway, there'll be more landings and takeoffs on that east-west runway, and if you can look at that east-west runway, our industrial agribusiness sector is right in, in line with that, so we're going to engage in, in that form and fashion too, so they've had some reaches, reach out for us in that vein. With that, that's where we're at, and, and I know, I'd hand it over to Mr. Gossett, he's handling the agreement, we are planning to meet soon, and we do intend to engage you as much as possible, as, as we move forward, and I'd hand it over to Mr. Gossett.
Gossett?
Sure, I'll just be really brief. I think Mr. Phelan's already said that a working draft of the agreement has been sent to Developers Council, waiting for their review and comment on it. I envision the, the, whatever agreement ultimately is reached, it'll be a springboard type of agreement, where additional work will be required, developing plans, additional contracts spring from the development agreement itself, so I'm certainly free to answer any questions, but as Mr. Phelan said, at this point, it's really not an open record, and negotiating in an open forum like this becomes problematic, so I can answer whatever questions I can, but know that a fairly lengthy agreement has been sent to, to the other side, and they're reviewing it.
Gossett, are there attorneys in the United States, or are they somewhere else?
Their local attorney is from Fargo with Fredrickson Byron, Michael Rom.
Fargo attorneys?
Yes.
You mentioned, that's right, you did mention that. So, are, are we, are we negotiating with their attorneys, or are we negotiating with the folks in Chicago, or are we negotiating with, directly with the, the folks in China?
My communication has been with Mr. Rom.
Got it. Okay. Interesting. Any other?
Mr., or Mr. Sandy, I think, we tend in the negotiation, I think they've centered their North American lead person that we've been working with, will be kind of part of that discussion, so I think they've kind of centered that negotiation. We've also been told they have engaged, as part of their design, some national firms that people would know as part of the design of their facility too, obviously, they have plants in China, they're going to have to bring those here and translate them to North American, and so, it sounds like that process has started, started too, which, which is good for us to get Black and Beach going, as they engage their American, US counterparts.
Yeah, of course, their air quality regulations are not the same as the United States, so having Black and Beach looking at their plans, and certainly, we're fortunate to have great engineering companies here, A2S, for example, doing great work for us, so helps protect our interests. So, you need a motion to move this forward to the government, local government advisory committee, or?
Really, it's an update, but as part of that, if, if, as I think about it, maybe a motion similar to the, to the Olive and, if I could move the, the specified incentive forward as part of a pilot to the local government, to get that moving down the line too.
Do you have, Mr. Weber?
I'm hoping we could have quite a bit of conversation before we had anything like a motion.
a motion.
Certainly can.
Vice President Mock? Well, I'll start off, Mr. London and Mr. Mayor, there's been a lot of work that goes behind this. It's a fantastic economic development win. Congratulations on all the work. Mr. Phelan, it's been a great deal of work for you and your team and Mr. Gossett, you both have a lot of work still ahead of you. Actually, my first question is for Council President Sandy. Annexing this area, what do you anticipate there?
I anticipate a whole bunch of business owners being unhappy about that. That's what I anticipate. But of course, the people that own the property in that area of town, as well as on the outskirts, other outskirts of our town, get the benefit of essentially living and working within the city. They get the benefit of pulling employees from the city and there are lots of benefits for being on the periphery. And, you know, I mean, I think they would, most of them would be honest and tell you they've been riding on the coattails of the city of Grand Forks. So making sure that we're providing ample communication with them will be very important and figuring out the best way to annex and how we annex over time and certainly what their cost share would be on the infrastructure, I think all of that will come into play.
And in some ways, this is a benefit of the project. This is something that probably has been needed to be considered for a while.
Yeah. And again, if you want my honest opinion, I think when all the dust settles, all of those businesses will be much better off and will continue to reap the benefits of being part of a larger scale project.
Traffic, you've mentioned truck traffic and DOT will be making their studies. That'll be truck and rail traffic?
Yeah, Councilmember Weber, yeah, I should have mentioned rail, yeah. And not only for rail its sake, but also rail impacts our surface transportation, too. So both of those will have to be looked at.
Right. I'm forgetting the name of the sugar plant north of us on I-29, but I know there's times in the winter where the fog can really affect traffic along the interstate. I suspect that we'd have something similar here once in a while, too. I'm guessing DOT will include that in their study, of course.
Yeah, Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, I think that'll be included in the air permit and the plume analysis. And obviously, part of the thing is if it's going to impact, whether it's transportation or some other safety concern, we'll have to get it to the appropriate parties.
Very good. With Black and Beach, we haven't heard that name for a while. It's good to hear that name again. Fantastic resource for a project like this. You mentioned a team that we'll be meeting with them. Can you give us an idea of who that team is?
Sure. Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber. It's really the city team, the city department team will be meeting those that are, along with some of our area consultants that are working on things. And really, it's going to be a virtual meeting and so, not to get into all the bloody details, but it'll be a virtual meeting where they're, start going over some fundamentals, the blocking and tackling of these things, so that we all get a better picture. As we move forward, I think secondarily, once we get an introduction, you know, get the 101 and we eventually want to get to graduate on this whole thing, is that they're probably, well, we deserve to go see some sites in the US, similar sites. And so that'll probably be on our menu of options, too, of looking at some other options, speaking with other communities that have hosted these facilities and, you know, some of the who's who of agribusiness likely run facilities and own facilities like that. So we'll look at some good comparisons and Black and Beach will help us with that, not only kind of saying, here's some great sites we've worked on, but also helping, hopefully get us in the door, help host us as part of that. And we're going to need somebody, because I suspect people just don't let you on industrial facilities just because you want to check it out. But we're going to be doing all that as part of that Black and Beach support service.
Similar to what we did early on with our explorations with NPN.
Yeah. And as you recall, I think, Mr. Weber, you went on the trip, you know, we went to Iowa to a new plant.
And Ohio.
And then Ohio, which was, I'll call it more of a historic plant. That was coupled with a petroleum refinery, too, at the time. So, and I always remember the, I think it was Lima, Ohio, which is, as I recall, the claim to be was the second place in the United States where they discovered oil. Thank you Rockefeller. And, but what they said is make sure these facilities, because they had a nitrogen fertilizer plant right next to a oil refinery, make sure it doesn't overtake your community. And our thought at the time, and fertilizer plant, I think is a much more magnificent agribusiness than this is, but I think we have such a strong agribusiness in our community already. We're already doing a lot of this stuff, is that I don't think it'll overwhelm the community. But that was the one thing, when we met with their mayor and city council, make sure your community can engage and accept industries and it doesn't overwhelm your community.
Thanks. Thanks for all of that. There's a citizen comment, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing, I'm sure I'm not pronouncing the name correctly, but Ms. Hu Ho Schwalm, who has posed a number of questions. Can you address those questions? They're questions that I share, so if you just take those, that'd be great.
Sure. Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber, I think I've answered most of those as I've gone through on those, but there's going to be a large swath of permits from the city of Grand Forks, from the state of North Dakota, as we move forward with its development. We're early on, so we don't know all the precise details, but the public, and you should know that we're working through all those particulars and more will come. And not only come with here, but eventually we have more answers. We need to have some public forums and public engagement, but we just don't want to show up to meetings to say, oh, we don't know any of the particulars. Otherwise, we'll leave people without answers. But people should know that we really are working on the details for a full circumference of the whole challenge that we have in front of us. And some people have said, you know, there's been some congratulations, but as we all know, this is a lot of work and it's a lot of due diligence and it's a lot of seriousness. So we're all very sober about this opportunity and want to do all the right things, working with Fu Fang Group. So we're not going to just allow the details lay in the side and we don't have all the answers. But I think to that gentleman or person, we are working on all those particulars.
And there's no need for me to read out the questions. Those are part of the public record here. I think they offer a sound structure for some of the things that we should be keeping in mind as we move forward. It's a well-written submission.
And you know, Governor Burgum, he's talked about being zero, carbon zero, and he's got a bit more hip term than that, but really, we have the natural gas coming. There's proposals to bring carbon capture pipelines to North Dakota, capture those, bring it out west for oil production. And so how do we take, you know, things that are going to be emitted, how can we take that, transmit them, transport them, and then put them in areas that we really need to? And so I think this is what Governor Burgum's talking about, is that there's some huge opportunities in agribusiness and carbon capture and really helping our oil and gas industry really on both ends. So this is one of these projects that could benefit by it, that NPN project could benefit by carbon capture. And it's really game-changing as part of making some of these investments.
If I could tag team onto what Mr. Weber was saying regarding those questions, I think the most common question I'm asked is, what's it going to smell like?
Yeah.
I think, I don't think we, I don't, I don't pretend to know the answer. I don't think you know the answer either. What I've been telling people is they have to meet the EPA requirements, they have to. I don't know what that means, but I do know that our industry partners in our region have been getting better. Things have been getting better. When I was a young man, a long, long time ago in Grand Forks, certainly the sugar beet factories had a significant odor in our community and I hardly notice it anymore because they've been making improvements. I have to believe that this corn milling plant will be following the same guidelines and will be doing everything they can, because certainly they don't want to be having complaints from me or you or anyone else in our community. So I do want to know that answer. I do. I want to get that answer because I want to be able to give people a more definitive, more than they'll follow the reds. So I think ultimately, if I can get any answer, that'd be a really good one for.
And that's one of the reasons for doing these visits to other communities that have these plants, right?
Exactly.
Any other, Mr. Veen, questions?
I do. I have a list of questions, so I appreciate the time. First of all, I think I'd like to say thanks for all the work that's gotten this plant here to this date. I think a lot, a lot of work is, and obviously, there's a lot more to come. I appreciate the development agreement. That's going to be super critical and there's going to be a lot of detail for that and as we move forward. So my line of questions are really around infrastructure and economics. And I think you've answered a lot of my questions that I think was originally looking for on the infrastructure side. You have a lot of studies that are going to go on. The one, first one that comes to my mind that I've written up is just the street and highways that's going to be impacted. Whether you, you know, it's going to be, we looked at the number of trucks, we looked at the number of rail cars and what that implication is going to be, whether it's going to come from east-west, north or south, there's going to be a lot of traffic that's going to impact the entire community. And we all know that truck traffic is what damages roads. It's not the cars that go through. It's the heavy trucks. It impacts longevity and all that. So earlier, I was questioning the thickness of the asphalt on Mill Road. Well, that kind of aligns with what's, where the trucks that come from Minnesota are probably going to come over the Kennedy Bridge and they're going to come through. There's going to be significant impacts on Gateway Drive all the way through town, on Washington as you go north, the interchanges that we get off of Interstate at both Gateway Drive and North Washington. And also, and so all of that has to be studied to know what that impact is going to be and what the, how it impacts the longevity of the streets that we currently have, because there will be impacts to lifecycle costing of all the things that we have now. So how are we going to cover those costs? It's a great opportunity, but I mean, there's these unanticipated impacts that we're going to have to make sure happen. And then, and I was thinking of the same thing with rail cars coming through town. One of the impacts could easily be, because there's been some discussion, about Gateway Drive needing to have some type of overpass or whatever over the railroad tracks and especially what the traffic that we would have on those tracks through town. And all of that, this is going to be essential to be studied as we go through with that. So the rail that you talked about is going to be studied, so we'll be able to look at that and the impacts at the crossings, the truck routes, looking at what the impacts are going to be on the average daily traffic and all of that. So that was good to hear and then to get some. Water is the other issue that we talked about, raw water availability. You know, we're really creating a whole new, almost utility by now selling raw water versus potable water. And, you know, I had some questions about, we just have the one intake right now that takes it from the Red Lake and Red River. And we, and at the water treatment plant, we use whichever water is going to be best for treating or the cheapest for treating. Now we're going to try to push both Red River water and Red Lake water through there. And I don't quite understand how we will be able to commingle those waters. You can't, because you need one or the other, but they come at a different cost from a different state and there's different implications for us. So you're probably well aware of that. We're looking at it. And now you're going to build a whole new pump station. You're going to, first of all, increase the capacity of the line through town and then a new pump station that's going to deliver that water to the north, right? That's going to be there for multiple purposes. Again, operationally, a big cost to us and we're going to have to figure out how we recover those costs and we again, look at the ongoing and increased operation and maintenance costs of those. The same is going to happen with wastewater, with the increased water, wastewater, again, we have to increase the capacity. We were already looking at doing an upgrade, right? Now, this, of course, changes everything. And I had asked before, too, about how both water and wastewater, with NPN coming in, how that compatibility is going to work and the usage. And you explained earlier about the gray water and the usage of that. I think that's a fantastic option for us, but it's certainly going to be impactful. And then you looked a little bit at the stormwater and the location and how you're draining that water, which is, was different than, so what was looked at before, just because all that stormwater, especially during flood time, when you have to close the outlets through there, is going to have to all be pumped. And so that capacity of the storm sewer lines, whatever, could be impacted by this, too. So, and then they will impact all of our operation of services because of the expansion that's going to take place. So I just want to make sure that we're addressing all of these costs holistically, because they're beyond what we normally do with a simple addition to our city. I mean, the infrastructure impacts are going to be significant. I think there was some discussion just a little bit earlier about a visit, a site visit, and you and I had that discussion a few weeks ago, you know, where is the closest site? Well, it's not in the United States. I do think it's something we should consider a site visit by the appropriate people, and I'm talking about from a site visit of the Fu Fang Group, not somebody else, but somebody who's already operating the same type of plant that we want to build. It's something worth considering to take a look at, understanding what they're looking at, the flumes or whatever that may come across. I was also thinking about just understanding all the risks that are associated to, and I'd like to see if we could put a risk assessment together to understand what they are and what we could do to mitigate those risks so that we don't get caught with something afterwards that we weren't aware of. So I think some level of understanding the risks and trying to figure out all of that. And the last thing, I guess I was trying to talk about is just understanding what the return on investment. We're going to spend hundreds of millions, or $100 million or so on all this infrastructure. What's that bring? Better understanding of the jobs, the jobs that are created, both the direct and the indirect jobs, so we can look at, say, this was a great investment for us, because there are things like that that I think would be best for us to understand. So I appreciate all the work. It looks like we're getting all of that. I just want to make sure that you understand where, these are the things that are on my mind when I saw this plant coming, because it's an opportunity, but it has some of these issues associated with it.
Council President Sandy, so I'm thankful for Mr. Veen and had lined out all those things. And I think the good thing is a vast majority of those we had contemplated and we added a couple more to your list. So those are the kind of things we want. If you hear something, let us know, so we make sure we capture it and can answer it when that final development agreement comes back, that we've kind of ticked off all those boxes that you have asked for.
Certainly, yes. Ms. Mock?
I think Mr. Weber and Mr. Veen have covered most. I do think, so yes, they will have to meet the state standards in order to get an air permit, but I've seen quite a few questions come forward about carbon emissions and, you know, odor and what that means for us. I think we need to know exactly what that means and I need a little bit more than just we'll meet the state's standards. That's a given. So I'd like to see some lifecycle analysis on putting the plant here and what that means. Certainly, if they don't have a North American plant, that reduces distribution impacts. So I don't think just putting the plant here is a carbon increase. I think that there's more to it than that and I think they would have more of a complete answer to that. But I would like to see that so that we make sure we're doing that due diligence as well. And with the visual and odor, I think residents want to know that they're not going to have those odor issues every spring or something like that. So certainly, we're not at that point, but I think we do have to add those to the list that at some point, we can have that conversation with the public and make sure that they're aware. And I assume with the wastewater, we've put protections in place so that we won't have similar issues like we did this spring.
Council President Sandy and Council Vice President Mock. Yes, they'll have an industrial pretreatment permit that will have parameters in them. They'll have some, you know, if you don't meet them, here are some of the violations. And again, it's all about execution. I think that's why we're trying to work upstream of this, because once something's there and things aren't working, there's, it's hard to fix things on the fly. And so that's why we're going to do all this due diligence and make sure that we have all the pretreatments involved and all those standards. And certainly, Fu Fang Group has to execute and deliver. We're not, we can certainly view plans and do all those sorts of things. So we'll try to mitigate our risk as much as possible on the upfront without, you know, getting too far over our skis, but they'll have an industrial pretreatment. We've said this, you know, we had issues with Red River Biorefined, there were many reasons, supply, pandemic, couldn't get the right folks here. Maybe there's some design things that could have been better. I think we're smarter because of that. We're also understand that this We're also understand that this, um, plant is, um, X times larger than that. So, um, if something goes wrong, it's just magnified and it's magnified to the point where, um, we may not be able to do all the adaptations, adaptations we did with Red River Biorefiner. So, um, it's, it's a serious issue that to make sure, certainly they think and they've had conversations, hey, it's not, not our first thing, we've got five plants in China and we want to enter the U.S. market. We're already here in the U.S. market, but we want to enter the U.S. market and North American market and have our own facility here, uh, from a supply chain. So I think they're a sophisticated group. They've engaged with their, uh, U.S. counterparts to help design this, so, and we, we'll do the same. So you've got to meet people where they're at in sophistication and we try to develop a team like that.
Um, and the other thing I would maybe add is if we do the incentives upfront, I think there's some concern with the public that after that, we'll want to keep them here, but they'll also know that we want to keep them here, so there might be additional asks. And so I would, I think the public would feel better if they knew we were thinking ahead and that this is an incentive program and then we expect them to stay and not necessarily grant additional incentives after that initial time period.
Council vice president Mock, you're referencing that first 20-year time period that, you know, that's what it is. And, you know, they, they have spoken of a two-phased approach within 10 years, you know, the initial investment after phase one and then within that 10-year period, coming back with a, a smaller but significant phase two investment. So I think most of the investment's going to be done over 10 years and, um, and really our incentives can go up to 20 years with this payment and low taxes, and I think that's going to be the end. And certainly they can come back to say, hey, it's been 20 years, we need to renew this or renew that, and we'll have to look at where the playing field is at that point in time.
It's probably unlikely, though, that they'd walk away from a multi-billion dollar investment, or, so.
I would just cite, um, J.R. Simplot. Every year they take the plant down and rebuild lines. We don't ever hear about it, other than it looks like the plant shut down, they got a bunch of contractors out there. They'll be doing stuff like that all the time, too, without asking for any incentives from the city.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, certainly.
Thanks. Um, I know it's, it's been a long meeting, but this is a, a huge project for our community. Um, uh, vice president Mock's final comment there about, uh, future asks from the company, that was one of the comments in the Schwalm, uh, submission. So, uh, this individual has given a lot of environmental concerns, but also some of those financial concerns. Um, my, my last comment or, or ask would be for the mayor. Um, Mayor Bocinski, uh, I remember when we were first talking about NPN years ago, uh, one of the promises about a development like this is that there would be tremendous benefit for individual property tax, uh, for families paying property tax, um, that somehow this was going to bring, uh, such huge amounts of, uh, property tax wealth to our community that individual families would, would all benefit. Uh, I recognize that you, you'd want to steer clear of making any very specific promises, but if you could present some sort of logic model of what families, what individual property taxpayers might anticipate as a consequence of a development like this.
Yeah, I think the EDC did put together some documents that would help on that, but just conceptually, just phase one of this project is, is equivalent to putting 2,500 to 3,000 houses up in a single fail swoop. So suddenly, if you look at our stock currently, um, at about, you know, roughly 24,000 residences, that includes apartments, you're adding a considerable amount of property tax revenue without adding, um, any, you know, users to that. A lot of what is going to come up from their utilities is paid for by the utilities. Um, so if you look at just that alone, um, you know, you can imagine having 2,500, 3,000 more houses without needing any more fire protection, really, you know, a small amount of fire protection, small amount of police protection, um, and the list goes on and on. So I think there's benefits beyond that. That's, that's one of the many benefits, uh, you know, we're obviously helping more students at the schools, um, you know, a number of different benefits, but I think just to wrap your head around it, you know, just phase one alone, let's call it 2,500 houses. So we'll see 10% of that rate upfront, so it's 250 houses and then it'd be, uh, 625 after, uh, the first 10 years. So I think it's substantial, um, but, uh, like I said, many, many benefits, uh, that's a great way to think about it, though.
Yeah, um, Mr. Veen has asked for ROI, return on investment for the community. If that could be drilled down to what individual families might, might anticipate from this. Uh, thanks.
Mr. Veen, one more comment?
Just, yeah, one last one, and mayor, you're well aware of this one, but, uh, as most people, I think it's the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is probably not needed more than it, than it will be after this, this were to take place. And as you go to, we had at one time $600 million of legislative intent that's still on the books. Um, that's needed. Uh, we need to have both a state and a local financing plan to make that happen. Uh, you had some discussions, so have I, about how we might get that to happen because what, uh, we, we have to have water supply before we can even treat it and use it. So that's going to be critical and I wish this could be one of those maybe pivotal points that would move the state forward and our legislature forward to try to do this, because I think, um, they haven't, they backed off in the last few years and it needs to become a focal point as we go forward. So first that one, and then the other thing on, on the, the tax exemption, is there a third-party review of the tax exemption like we did with the Olive Garden or Olive Inn and that?
I'll answer the second, I'm going to hand it up.
Which, I think I know the answer to that, but I still have to ask.
As you recall, we've done the third-party analysis on, we'll call it mixed-use developments where we can look at the books. Um, as you recall, the last time we had one of these was the High Bay freezer at, um, J.R. Simplot. It was like a $60 million investment. We just determined that was, we did a 10-year exemption on that one, uh, tax exemption. We did not review it, uh, just because it's not a, um, something viable that we're going to review. It's, it's really an incentive to get them here and it's not an incentive whether, it's harder to do a third party, so we're not going to do it, I guess, is the short answer.
President Sandy, a second hit on the Red River Valley Water Supply. We're actually going to be down in Fargo on Wednesday, uh, continuing to advocate this between the chamber down there and local legislators, but I think this is going to be similar to natural gas. I mean, this project really was the spur to get the natural gas pipeline here and the water one is, is obviously been a, a longer-term project, but now this gives even more credence to that. So we're going to be harping on that non, non-stop and it's even something we need to think about as, uh, as we look at what's our permitting level on that, Red River Valley Water Supply. Do we need to increase this now with, with further water usage? But, uh, we're definitely on it. The special session was, was good to the, the project and, uh, I'm really pushing for it to get funded sooner rather than later with all the, uh, increased costs of inflation.
I think there was an article in Fargo Forum, probably today, about more than $100 million savings if, in the whole project cost, if they would expedite the project. Um, I've just got a heads up on that, but I mean, there's a lot of savings to be made. I mean, if we can make this a priority.
Just feeling, I'll note that it's still a three-week quarantine to go to China, so I don't suspect that we're going there anytime soon, although I do think it's a great idea. Uh, I, I don't personally want to spend a month in China right now, so, uh, hopefully that'll change sooner than later. Any other, uh, any other comments? So did you want that motion to move this to the government advisory board?
Specifically the 20-year pilot as described.
Yep, 20-year pilot, 9075, right?
Yep, and I don't need that recommendation, just to move it to the, the group and then we'll discuss that incentive at that group, similar to Olive Inn.
Right, so, yes, Ms. Mock.
Um, it might be helpful at some point to sketch out what kind of process we actually are talking about, because, you know, so many of these questions depend on design and further process, but to know for the public, you know, when we might have public inquiry or when we might know some of those answers or if we have water supply for the project, things like that would probably be helpful at some point.
We'll do that. We'll continue to refine, um, the scope and, and kind of the tracking of where, where we're going from here.
Mr. Goss, did you have something to add as well?
Yeah, just a, a comment about the, the pilot. Uh, the 20 years is statutorily capped at 20 years for a pilot. Um, and also, and, and we've gone through a number of pilot agreements already. Yeah, every one of them provides that, uh, there are no other incentives that would be granted to the property owner. Is usually the, a term that I, I include in those type of agreements.
Excellent. Great protection. So is there a motion to move this to the government advisory committee? Move by, move by Weigl, is there a second by Dockler?
Yes.
Very good. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments for the good of the order? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn by Veen? Moves, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, we adjourn.[1788.21]